Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of March 25, 2025. These proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcast by Area 58 TV. Our first public hearing is continued on Meadows Solar One LLC, care of New Leaf Energy, requesting a special permit in site plan hall. Thank you.
Yep.
I did forget, we need to say pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to wrap up quick tonight, huh?
Yeah. Really moving along. All right. Again, public hearing continued on Meadows Solar One LLC, care of New Leaf Energy, requesting a special permit in site plan review pursuant to Section 290-3-6.7, 290-4-3.4, 290-2-2.3, 290-5-3, 290-3-6.7, and 290-4-3.4 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 19C Ward Street in Carver, Mass, Sessors Map 120 Lot 6-1 in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The applicant is proposing to construct a floating solar array on four human-made agricultural reservoirs. Is there anyone here to speak about that? Did they update you?
If I may.
Mr. Chairman, I am going to go with, I think they sent me a request for a continuance because we didn't have a technical review from Professor O'Neill at this point. I'll check the records as we get into things, but chances are that's what the ask was and we just didn't get updated on the resident, on the, so if we can cycle back to this, we can continue to date certain after we get into talking about some of the other folks we've got in front of us.
Okay.
If we can just kind of pause on one.
Put this on hold.
I'll sort that out.
Momentarily. All right. All right. So then we'll put that on hold for, for a little bit and get back to it, probably in all likelihood, accept motion to continue it. Number two, Renewable Energy Development Partners LLC is requesting a special permit in site plan review pursuant to Section 290-2-2.3(c), Article 3-1, 290-4-3.4(a), and Article 5-3 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 96 Purchase Street, Zero Leeway, Zero Rare Plastic Road in Carver, Mass, Sessors Map 57, Map 58, Lot 2-a, Lot 2-0 in the Residential Agricultural Zoning District. The proposed project includes a dual-use ground-mounted solar voltaic, photovoltaic system on existing agricultural cranberry bogs as part of an agricultural solar tariff generation unit. The applicant is requesting a continuance and at this time I'd like to ask for a motion to continue.
When are they? April 22nd?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to continue Renewable Energy Development Partners, special permit in site plan, public hearing until April 22, 2025, 7:00 p.m., Carver Town Hall, Room 1.
Hearing none?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sibillo says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
And when time permits, Mr. Chairman, I can toggle back to item number one on the agenda as well.
You can now?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go back to the public hearing on Meadows Solar One LLC, care of New Leaf Energy.
So we did receive an email, the applicant requests, respectfully requested continuance from the March 25, 2025 Planning Board Meeting to adhere to the April 22, 2025 meeting to allow time to prepare response to Professor O'Neill's comments as well as those posed by the board at the first hearing. So they have requested a continuance.
Thank you for that information. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue this to April 22.
I'll make a motion to continue Meadows Solar One LLC, requesting a special permit in site plan review for 19C Ward Street to April 22, 2025, 7:00 p.m., Carver Town Hall, Room 1.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
Hold on just a second. So for this one, has everybody else been available the whole time? Because all these, these next two are, I'm not going to be at the bench.
If I may.
For the next two?
Well, one and two.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to be here for the continuance.
Okay. You won't be here April 22nd?
I won't be, I won't be in office.
Okay.
The election will have happened.
Understood. So, Mr. Planner, can you explain that?
Yes, if I may. So we've had this discussion with the applicant previously about 19C Ward Street. And as I've said before, and hopefully not after town meeting, in the absence of the Mullen Rule, we've already let them know that they're likely going to have to ask for withdrawal and reapply due to a loss of quorum by the board with John leaving. So likely they're going to be asking for a withdrawal, reapply to reset the clock for the reconsidered, reconstituted board following that.
Okay.
Even though this is a special permit and Mr. Maynard could speak on?
Yeah, I think, I think we're down to like.
Was testimony taken? Were you for one of them or?
So this was one of those things where we had, we had an application, we were down in Room 4. It was opening night.
Oh, I remember.
So I never want to cancel opening night.
If you're not ready, if the board is not ready, it's the only time the applicant gets
a personal invitation to come to the meeting.
Right.
I said, if there are people here, abudders who are here, we're going to talk about it regardless of the circumstances for your application because these people came out to hear what's going on.
Yep, absolutely.
So we always open, opening night on that night, knowing that it was likely that they were going to have to reapply.
Okay.
So we've had those conversations with them and that's probably where we're steaming to at this point.
All right.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. All right. So we're looking for an eye out of you.
You got an eye.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sibillo says aye. Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Third, we're here for Jeff Peterson. He's requesting a special permit pursuant to Article 5-3 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 239 Tremont Street in Carver, Mass. In the Village Zoning District, the proposed project includes renovating an existing kitchen and offer takeout only. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Planner, can you let us know what the board health had to say?
So in your, in the draft decision, there is actually that condition, but here's the email from the health agent. Please be advised, I have reviewed and approved the layout and floor plans for the proposed deli. If approved by the planning board, I will be conducting a pre-operational inspection of the kitchen and will thereafter conduct operational kitchen inspections twice yearly. Let me know if you need anything else regarding the above. So building, fire, and health will all be requiring them to comply with codes, but the question is specifically about the board of health. So that is in the draft decision that I put together as well, those conditions that are for prison, for fire and building to do their inspections as well as the board of health. So at this point, I don't know if there was any outstanding questions from the board, but I have drafted, put together a draft decision for this and happy to bring it up on the screen and have that discussion with the board.
Well, I'll open it up at this time if there's any more questions from the board.
Did we receive anything back from the fire department or did they just?
I have gotten no adverse, I've gotten no comments back from them.
All right.
I talked to the fire department. They requested from me.
Jeff, if you would, tell us who you are, so we can.
Jeff Peterson. I talked to, I lost my train of thought.
Fire Department?
Yeah, the fire department and the building department and the zoning, everything's good. The fire department just wants a list of the equipment that I'm putting in there and the data sheet that goes along with all the consumption things. So it's pretty much the only thing the fire department wants is an equipment list and of course the fire alarm to be incorporated in. But from what I was understood, every business in Carver has an alarm that's wired directly to the fire department per code. So that was the only other thing.
All right. And you said that you were going to have the dumpster wood?
Oh.
Would make sure that it was getting picked up twice a week?
And it would be blocked from visible sight. I'd have a gate on it as well.
All right.
And the pest control as well. I believe it's Plymouth County Pest Control is who I'm going to be using.
Plymouth County Pest Control?
Yes. So far, unless something changes, but I don't see it changing.
I just have this little typo.
Are you pouting about it?
Well, I don't know. Are you? Because that's what it says, right?
That's why we make the board, that's why we put those things in to see if the board's reading the decisions.
Yeah.
It's fixed in the final version.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, we had big fun in Falmouth when the, they were building a glamp ground and they were going to have a hot tub. And the assistant town planner thought it'd be, oh, hot tub time machine. So we actually wrote hot tub time machine into the draft and then we had to point out to the board, by the way, you missed the time machine part. And then they couldn't put the time, the hot tub in. Very sad for all the time travelers. So as I said, the draft decision that I put together essentially has the narrative of the, our two architects that talks about the equipment they're going to be removing. So it is takeout only. The equipment that they'll be installing from the narrative, I noted in the health agent's report, as he reported, the health agent's reported, he'll be reviewing and approving the layout of the floor in the deli. Applicant is renting. Just want to confirm hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 7:30 to 7:30?
Yes, sir. That was a question I had. They, as a store, I don't know what their license goes to as how long they stay open. In the winter and fall months when it's slower, they close earlier, but they said they stay open later in the summertime to say nine o'clock. I don't know if that's their, how they do it. I was just going with the operation of the store. If they're open, I'll be open.
I think it, I think in the summertime, we have it till 10 o'clock, right?
Well, the, the decision right now says you're selling your last burger at 7:30.
Then that's fine. I was just going by the origin.
Why would you want to restrict yourself?
Well, I would. I just, I was just going by what the store told me their hours were and they pretty much said 7:30 to 7:30. So without questioning, I just said, I'll just mirror what your hours of operation is and I'll be open the same amount of time.
Well, why don't we leave it that you mirror their hours unless of course they're open.
Perfect.
Later. So you're not restricting yourself.
Perfect.
So what do we mean by that?
Make that change.
So we're gonna, we're gonna keep it 7:30 to 7:30 for winter hours and then whatever their summer hours will be, we'll open it to at least nine o'clock.
I think nine o'clock's fair. I would prefer to keep it Sunday, 7:30 to 7:30 though. They have but two residential properties and I think they could use a little break in the evenings on Sundays.
That seems like fair enough. I was just thinking that, I think the other places are open until 9:30 or 10, right?
Which, I don't, which other places?
Thinking of Giorgio's and Santoro's.
Yeah.
For nine o'clock, be all right with you?
Sure.
Taken into consideration?
Yeah.
To be a good neighbor with the?
A hundred percent.
Woman who was looking for a little bit of support.
So just so I can be clear, right now it says hours of operation Monday through Sunday, 7, 8:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. Summer hours can be extended to 9:00 p.m. Do we want to limit that 9:00 p.m. to?
7:30 on Sundays. And so I don't even know that we need to separate it between summer and winter hours, just make it 7:30 to 9:00 p.m. and Sunday, 7:30, 7:30 to 7:30. I would think that would be reasonable. We got, because are we going to define what the summer is?
Agreed.
All right. So. The 9:00 p.m. Summer hours?
No, Monday through Saturday.
We'll just keep it Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday.
7:30 to 9:00 p.m. And then Sunday, 7:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m.
Okay. All right. And then we'll clean up the rest of that. Hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 7:30 to 9:00, Sunday hours until 7:30 p.m. All right.
I'd like to ask for a motion to accept.
Motion to close the public hearing?
A motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for Jeff Peterson, requesting a special permit at 239 Tremont Street in Carver, Mass.
Second that motion.
Further discussion? Mr. Gasky.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sibillo says aye. Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mary. All right, we'll get you guys to sign that at the end of the meeting so we can get it filed for the clerkship.
All right. Fourth public hearing is on Eric Perkins, EJP Trust, requesting a site plan review pursuant to Article 3-1 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 78 North Main Street in Carver, Mass, Sessors Map 18, Lot 12-5 in the General Business Zoning District. The applicant is proposing to build an addition to an existing commercial structure. The addition will accommodate the needs of a growing business, nor would printing graphics and marketing. No new employees are being added. Pavement markings will be added to the existing parking lot as well.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Rob Carloson from Grady Consulting. So we're here to talk about the revised site plan for 78 North Main Street, Carver. As just mentioned, this is an addition to an existing commercial building. From our previous hearing, there were a couple of comments. One of them was a, the request for a planting plan. Since the previous version of the plan, we added a planting plan comprised of holly shrubs and hostas in the front strip between the parking lot and the road. Kind of acts as sort of a buffer strip and then sort of a, around the existing signs that's in the buffer strip. One of the other comments was we were still waiting for a fire department review. We did receive the review letter from the fire department. They were, they were fine with the addition. They did request that we restrict parking in the area to the left of the proposed addition. So we kind of, we added a bunch of like the cross hatch striping to note that no cars were allowed to park in that area. And we also removed the parking space that is closest to the entrance on the left side of the entrance. So you see that we did eliminate that one spot. I think that was a comment from one of the board members last, last hearing. But other than that, I think that's our, those are our changes from the previous site plan submittal.
Professor O'Neill have to see this?
We did refer to them. I talked to Andy today. He said he has some minor comments, but we don't have his report yet.
Okay.
So it's, and I don't have a draft decision for it, so it's up to the board if they want to consider approving contingent on or just continuing it to our next meeting. Which is without meeting April 22. We won't be meeting in two weeks as we took the three days.
So we'd be putting this off a month, a little more than a month?
Correct.
A little less than a month.
Unless the board opts to meet on another date, you know, during April. Last time we met, we talked about April 8 for town meeting and April 22 and not meeting another week during April.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from the board?
I would like to see Andy's comments. And I'd like to reconfirm that the fire department's okay, but.
Tony, we can't hear you.
Sure. I'd like to see Professor O'Neill's comments and it looks like they've, they've made enough space for the fire engines, but I just want to reconfirm now that changes have been made with the fire department. I think you've done well putting the landscaping out front to help with that. And were there any issues raised by the Conservation Commission in regards to conditions or aspects of this project?
There have been nothing. So you guys are for, in front of conservation or you're?
We went in front of conservation, I think, two months ago. We have an order of conditions. We actually just got it recorded at the registry a few days ago, or this past week.
All right. So I think we're going to go and wait to hear from our town engineer regarding it. We said we can make it for the 22nd?
So that pushes after 4/22.
4/22. All right.
How many other things we have on 4/22? Just the other two solars? But where, there's some level expectation that they'll be refiling on those?
So presently on 4/22, we've got Route 44 is the only item that's on the agenda and the two things that we continue to 4/22. If those folks do have to pull their application and refile, we'll have time to get it advertised in order to be on the 4/22 meeting. So that's where we're at right now, one, two, three, and four.
Just a question, is there any chance we could vote tonight with conditions? Is that an option?
I guess it depends on our report from the engineer.
So if I may, just render an opinion. What we talked about before is that the addition that they're putting is on pavement. So we're not expanding the amount of impervious surface. In fact, with putting a building there versus the parking lot, there's actually an upgrade in water quality because rather than that water hitting the parking lot and mixing with whatever has to drip off a vehicle, it hits the roof of the building and gets infiltrated through downspouts directly into the ground, downspouts into the ground. So there's, there's, it's, it's a better sight, cleaner sight with the landscaping and things like that. I would venture to say, and I can't speak for the engineer, but I would think that their comments wouldn't be extensive because we're not, you know, clearing and redeveloping a piece of land, but that's up to the board.
You would be agreeing to their conditions if they have any on this? That's the only thing.
Eric Perkins, owner of 78 North Main Street. I'm okay with the conditions because we've already gone through the regulations with the environmental and everybody else. So we already know kind of what we're having in front of us to go through this. And like the gentleman said, we are just taking a piece of the parking lot, digging it up, then putting a building exactly where the parking lot is. And then we're going to drain properly into the ground. So the conditions I don't think are going to be that extensive coming from the town engineer for what we're trying to do. And we've kind of foreseen this with the whole project and the scope of what we've been doing. So I'm going to be okay with voting and doing their conditions as one of the privies to this. Because I'd like to just be able to get an idea of a cost structure, what it's going to cost me to do this. And I can't do it without you guys giving me some sort of okay. I'm already hemorrhaging money.
All right.
Has any work started on the property yet?
I put a roof, I put a roof because it was leaking the other day. That was 20 grand.
That's outside of this project.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying. But no, no work's been done because I have to get your approval before I stick a shovel in the ground. And then I have to go through the planning process. I got a lot more to do. And I'm trying to get in, I'm going to lose my original building, so I have to kind of navigate through this a little exponentially.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us. I'm, I'm fine with asking to close, asking for a motion to close the public hearing. Let's check with the public first. Excuse me? Again, is there anybody in the public that needs to come forward?
But where's, there's some level expectation that they'll be refiling on those?
So presently, on four twenty-two, we've got Route forty-four is the only item that's on the agenda. And the two things that we continue to four twenty-two. If those folks do have to pull their application and refile, we'll have time to get it advertised in order to be on the four twenty-two meeting. So that's where we're at right now. One, two, three, and four.
Just a question. Is there any chance we could vote tonight with conditions? Is that an option?
I guess it depends on our report from the engineer.
So if I may, just render an opinion. What we talked about before is that the addition that they're putting is on pavement. So we're not expanding the amount of impervious surface. In fact, with putting a building there versus the parking lot, there's actually an upgrade in water quality because rather than that water hitting the parking lot and mixing with whatever has to drip off a vehicle, it hits the roof of the building and gets infiltrated through downspouts directly into the ground, downspouts into the ground. So there's, there's, it's, it's a better site, cleaner site with the landscaping and things like that. I would venture to say, and I can't speak for the engineer, but I would think that their comments wouldn't be extensive because we're not, you know, clearing and redeveloping a piece of land. But that's up to the board.
You would be agreeing to their conditions if they have any on this? That's the only thing. Good.
Eric Perkins, owner of seventy-eight North Main Street. I'm okay with the conditions because we've already gone through the regulations with the environmental and everybody else. So we already know kind of what we're having in front of us to go through this. And like the gentleman said, we are just taking a piece of the parking lot, digging it up, then putting a building exactly where the parking lot is. And then we're gonna drain properly into the ground. So the conditions I don't think are going to be that extensive coming from the town engineer for what we're trying to do. And we've kind of foreseen this with the whole project and the scope of what we've been doing. So I'm gonna be okay with voting and doing their conditions as one of the privies to this. Because I'd like to just be able to get an idea of a cost structure, what it's gonna cost me to do this. And I can't do it without you guys giving me some sort of okay. I'm already hemorrhaging money.
All right.
Has any work started on the property yet?
I put a roof, I put a roof because it was leaking the other day. That's twenty grand.
That's outside of this project.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying. But no, no work's been done because I have to get your approval before I stick a shovel in the ground. And then I have to go through the planning process. I got a lot more to do. And I'm trying to get in, I'm gonna lose my original building, so I have to kind of navigate through this a little exponentially.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us. I'm, I'm fine with asking to close the pub, asking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Let's check with the public first.
Excuse me? Again, is there anybody in the public that needs to come forward? All right. So looking for that motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make said motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Mr. Gasky.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. And so make a, get a motion to accept this. You are accepting the conditions that GAF, that Fussin' O'Neil will put down on paper?
Yep.
All right.
I'm good with that.
So it will be, the motion will be contingent upon their, their conditions and the fire department. And was there one other?
I would, I would say that the, no waivers unless, because if we don't prove waivers, we'd see that.
Right.
I believe I will let up in the fire department.
Yeah, the fire department's looked at it. They had some comments. They sent a picture. Don't put stuff on the left side.
That's why we redesigned the parking lot.
Yeah. And Mr. Shea brought up a good point. If, if you aren't, aren't accepting of it, you won't be receiving a waiver of GAF. I keep saying GAF. Fussin' O'Neil's report.
Just for an example, bike rack. So.
A what?
A bike rack. If they said that you need to request a waiver for a bike rack, that waiver shouldn't, won't apply and you'd have to put in a bike rack. That's just an example. So.
I'll put in whatever they want. Want a birdhouse? I'll put you a birdhouse. Don't matter to me, man.
All right. I'd like to ask for a motion to accept Eric Perkins, EJP Trust's site plan review.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
Just the conditions that we stated. It's conditional upon the recommendations of Fussin' O'Neil and that no waivers would apply to it. And that the fire department reviews and approves the changes.
All right. So I've had a second. Mr. Gasky?
So if I may, just, so the board signs decisions. So when we have the draft decision, we'll, everybody will get a chance to put their eyeballs on it. And if there's something in there that seems untoward, shoot me back a note that says, fix that thing and I'll fix it.
We'll have Fussin' O'Neil's recommendations included.
Yeah. So after I get Fussin' O'Neil's recommendations, I'll write the, the decision, share it with the board members. If there's something that, you know, needs tweaking or something like that, we'll tweak it and you get it signed and we don't have to wait till February twenty-second.
Now I don't have to come back.
April.
April.
Thank you. What did I say, February?
February.
It's a long time. We're not gonna wait that long.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Send us an email as a copy of this.
Yeah. So April, so as soon as I see Fussin' O'Neil's stuff, we'll write it up, keep you guys in the loop where we're at.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
For the second last time, Mr. Gasky.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Take care.
Our next matter is a public hearing for Buzzards Bay Coalition on behalf of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company requesting a definitive subdivision rescission approval pursuant to the Carver subdivision controlled by law for property located between Tremont Street and Wareham Street in Carver, Mass. Source map one twenty-eight, lots one, two, three, and fifteen, map one twenty-seven, lot thirty-three, in the residential agricultural zoning district.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself because I am a direct abatter of this property.
Okay.
I'm Mr. Chairman. For the record, Bob Rogers, GAF Engineering on behalf of the applicant.
That's why I keep saying GAF.
We don't, we don't mind how many times you mention us. So this is about as easy as it gets with a Form C plan. This subdivision was approved two years ago in April of 2023 as kind of a freeze plan. So the Slocum Gibbs family has an agreement with Buzzards Bay Coalition. And so in order to proceed with that agreement, which, you know, a Form A plan, you know, will be forthcoming. But the first thing we have to do is get rid of this subdivision plan. Expunge it, if you will. Get your decision, get it recorded so that we can go back to a, a single piece of property and then do the Form A plan that they, you know, have, I keep saying plan, but, so basically, we're just gonna make this, you know, expunge it and go back to a single piece of property that they can then rework into a, a different agreement.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board?
This is for Buzzards Bay Coalition?
Buzzards Bay Coalition is the applicant. Slocum Gibbs is the owner.
Are they the, is that applicant going to have, are they the same ones that are on the CPC warrant this year or the?
So you may want to give the background that the property's being sold, the Buzzards Bay Coalition?
Yes.
Is open space?
John Garrettson, I'm the principal of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company. We did the plan two years ago at the behest of a potential buyer purchaser of the property at the time. Nothing gives me greater pleasure than to come in tonight to rescind that plan. We never wanted to do a development of any sort, and this was at the behest of a potential purchaser, that we were doing this with some degree of reluctance. The Buzzards Bay Coalition approached us after the plan was approved and we would rather not have any development on the property. And obviously, after a hundred and six years of owning it, our druthers is to not see the land developed. Buzzards Bay, it's a big gulp for anybody. And Buzzards Bay was able to put together a program to purchase property from us and not develop the property. And that's exactly what we're looking for, is to have it to go back into open land and the way that the land was with some retention of cranberries. But as circumstances have it, myself and my family will not be able to continue to own the property. And it is going to be a, the ideal circumstance for us is that the town indulge us and have this property go into a Buzzards Bay Coalition-owned property that will be used for recreation and recreation land.
Yep.
So that's, the long and the short is that I'm rescinding the plan, that this is something that they asked me to do now. We have a purchase and sale agreement and it looks like it's going to move forward shortly. But to be able to get the plans back to the original open space, we need to rescind this so that this isn't overlaid on the purchase and sale agreement, which is why we're doing it early.
So.
You've spent a lot of time doing the plan with us.
Oh, yeah.
And it was a pain for all of us. But I appreciate the indulgence, which is why I'm here tonight to owe the board an explanation and tell you what's up.
If I may?
Yes.
I was, I was in Wareham at the town meeting where Buzzards Bay Coalition put on a, they put on a show essentially, talking about what their plans for the Wareham side. They requested funding from Wareham to, to help complete the purchase and stuff. And based on what they presented there, thank you. I think it's, it's gonna be a wonderful project to return everything and really make it a, a great recreational destination for everyone.
I think this has been in front of the CPC a couple of times for the town warrant.
We will be at town meeting with the CPC, asking for the town's commitment, to commit some to do this. But it is, it's a big gulp for everyone and we appreciate the effort that Buzzards Bay has been putting into it. My family appreciates that. But nothing will give us more satisfaction than seeing this property be retained in the manner it was in nineteen nineteen when my grandfather was walking across it, rather than developing it. We could have done this, multiple developments and harassed the heck out of you guys and done fifty house lots or whatever else. And that was not our druthers to be doing any of that on the property here. So we're glad to see it going back and we're being reassured by Buzzards Bay that it will be as protected as it has been by my family over the last hundred and six years.
That's great. Now, I was, the Buzzards Bay Coalition discussed that several of the bogs are gonna remain in operation?
There are, there's acres in Carver and in Wareham.
Right.
That will still remain in operation. Cranberries at this time in our generation are, can be challenging. And there was some modernized properties that we had done in the town of Wareham and did a $2.1 million investment into the modernization of bogs, which everyone else is trying to do at the same time now so that your production can overshadow your costs. And it's a challenging time for that. Hopefully, the bog in front of the barn on Wareham Street will be able to be retained. And then twenty-eight acres down in Wareham that's modernized into the new generational production that will be in good shape.
Right.
We also have Rochester and some property in Rochester and Middleborough that will be retained for a period of time also.
Great. Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? I will ask if there's anybody in the audience who'll have, like to come forward. Seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing on Buzzards Bay Coalition for definitive subdivision rescission approval.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. I would like a motion to accept Buzzards Bay Coalition's rescission.
I'll make a motion to approve the definitive subdivision rescission for Buzzards Bay Coalition on behalf of Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company.
Second.
Further discussion?
Is that you second, John?
I did.
John seconded.
One question that I have, since it was a special permit and subdivision, do we need to?
No, this is no, there's no special permit. Just straight subdivision.
All right. No problem.
Well, thank you.
When, when Mary got up, I was almost gonna-
Trying to get me on.
When, when Mary made her announcement, I always was gonna make an announcement. But don't get too excited because, you know.
Yeah. We always try to get him in. All right.
He, he got props in Worcester, you know.
He did. He did. He did. And he's got a nice couch for a ride. All right then. Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Thank you, and I'm very happy for you that you can do this.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have a, a decision ready for signature for this as well. And in a couple of minutes before we get done, I'll have the revised decision for-
I think we get written copies.
The clerks as well. So we can sign both of those before we go home tonight.
Sure.
You'd be so kind. Thank you.
Did everybody get a copy of the planner's notes? I'm wondering.
No, but what about?
Of the what?
We have the, not the copy of the planner's, a copy of the minutes from the eleventh and twenty-fifth. No. Yes, the eleventh.
It was the twenty, yeah, the eleventh and the twenty-eighth, yeah. I did have some edits, but I don't actually have minutes in front of me. There's only one. I think it was the January twenty-eighth, twenty, twenty, no, February eleventh was downstairs in room four. Then that was the one I have edits for, but I don't have a copy to reference the edits.
All right. So we can table the?
Well, like, I could do it if somebody, if, says, do you have a copy? I could just, yeah.
For the eleventh?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But can I have a motion to accept the minutes for the January twenty-eighth? Is that right? We're going back to the twenty-eighth? Yeah, twenty-eighth.
Oh, so make that motion.
Second that.
Further discussion?
John Gasky says aye.
Yeah.
On the twenty-eighth.
Right. So aye, I'm approving it, yes.
Yep. Ellen?
Second.
Or at aye?
I'm sorry. Ellen Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. And given that you're gonna-
I can do it right now.
You can pass that to Tom.
I can do it orally. Under section five, it says, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's under public hearing. Yeah, under section five, after it lists the proposed bylaw, it says, Cornelius Shea recommends this be removed. But it should read, Cornelius Shea recommends certain language be removed. Now, that's the only edit I had of that. And now I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February eleventh, twenty twenty-five?
Thank you. Can I have a second? Second from John Gasky?
As edited?
As edited, yes, sir.
Second.
Further discussion?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says aye.
I did not attend that meeting.
Okay. And Kevin Robinson says aye. Mr. Planner, I jumped right over you. I'm sorry. You wanted to recap the CPT training?
No, no, no. The, the planning board members' notes come first.
Yes, but I went right to minutes. So are there any notes from the planners? Did you want to say something? I mean, I personally would like to say thank you for your service. And you are gonna be sorely missed.
It's like this is, this is the last one I'll be at.
Yes.
One more.
Well, the town meeting. Let's not publicize. No, I'd just like to say thank you to, to everyone in Carver who voted for me, gave me this opportunity. This is a great learning experience, learning, seeing all the projects coming in, all the hard work that everybody's putting into making Carver a better place. It's been enjoyable, to say the least, coming here and debating and passing the, the different projects and stuff here with you guys and with, with everyone else. And I know that you guys are gonna continue to do a great job. I think that the job that we've done up to this point has been stellar and it's gonna, you guys will keep it going, do a great job. Appreciate the support going forward and you guys enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gasky. I'm proud to see you moving forward.
Thank you.
I can say from what we've seen so far, we're gonna, we're gonna appreciate having you up in, up at the State House. So.
Thank you.
Supporting what Patano's trying to do.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Bott when it comes to it, but?
Sure. He needs almost back.
Let's get in copies.
Making copies at the- There's a question being asked of you, Mr. Bott.
Yes, I was watching the select board, last select board meeting. We attended the first portion of it. At the end- At the end of it, town council raises some concerns over the legality of the additional dwelling unit bylaw that, that we recommended. And I was wondering, is there anything further on that? Or will we be, he mentioned that he's going to work to make motions to change it at town meeting?
So after I left?
I'm guessing it's after you left, so. I didn't know if he had come in contact with you, but certainly if he's going to work on making motions to change what we've recommended, I would like to see that the planning board reviews those prior to town meeting.
So, so two things, we, that's why the planning board always meets since I've been here, prior to town meeting, to make sure if we have to have any cleanup, that we do that. I got a copy of the draft warrant today, reviewed it. I didn't see any changes, it went to town council. So I don't know if there's anything that's changed in there, but that's why we post for town meeting prior to. So we'll, we'll be in our typical room around the corner from the offices prior to town meeting. But I'll follow up on that and see if, if there's actually any changes, if something along that line.
Will they be putting out draft warrants for the general public? Or can we get our own copy?
Well, they, they don't send out drafts, but when they're, when they're finalized...
Typically, they put out draft, draft warrants for usually a couple weeks in advance of town meeting.
All the ones I see say draft warrants not for public distribution, so. I'm not sharing...
That's a first, that's why I'm, I'm curious. And I think as, as a board in this town, we should have access to see what exactly is being...
Yeah, so warrants are posted typically at least one week before town meeting for a special town meeting two weeks before. So as soon as I've got something official, I'll, I'll forward it on to you guys.
Again, it was finalized the other night. This isn't, not, not getting in a back and forth with you, Mr. Bob. Typically, they put a draft warrant out for public review prior to that, and as they finalize the warrant, do we have any idea when, when this will be put forward? We have articles on it, we should be able to review them if they...
Yeah, I'm operating under the same procedures I've operated under the couple of years I've been here. I've never seen that before.
This would be the first year it wasn't put out.
Who's to know? I'll, I'll check with the, I'll, I'll check with the town administrator's office.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bob. Did you want to speak of the...
No, I just wanted to give folks an opportunity, if they had any follow-up, any discussion, any comment about the, the training session we went to in Worcester, just to open it up to the floor, to the, the members who attended, or to sort of advertise and get everybody so excited for next year, they're going to, they're, they're, they'll knock over their loved ones to get out of town.
Personally, I would highly recommend going. I think, Alan, you, you enjoyed yourself?
Yeah, as, obviously, as the new, the new kid on the block, and not drinking from a fire hose anymore, we still fill in a lot of gaps. That's the way I would look at it, fill in a lot of gaps and give you a better... I was thinking, well, how a lot of this worked together, so, all for the good.
And that was that first session you went to?
It was very entertaining. I was, I was afraid the press was going to call on me, but, you know. I kept a straight face and everything passed, so.
Well, as you know, if you're going to talk to people on a Saturday morning at 8 a.m., you're the first guy, you need to, you know, you don't want them napping early on.
I didn't do much work on Saturday mornings, but I was in IT training for a good 10 years. And five days in a row is almost a different dynamic. You know, you get Katie Cork, remember her, every morning? You get Miss Perky, so I get the whole thing, yeah. You got a, you got an Irish chick.
Thank you. And I would appreciate that again. That is a good thing for all of us on the board to be part of, if we can go to it and time prevails.
Well, and they do have, you know, virtual sessions during the course of the year as well. This is the conference where they do three of them together, so it's very handy that way to get to a couple of different things. Sometimes the core discussions, like subdivisions and things like that, aren't necessarily at the conference. But we've always got the opportunity to do in-house trainings as we've done before, or when, when the schedule comes out in the fall for the sessions that are coming up, we'll put that out to folks as well.
Thank you.
And I thoroughly enjoyed it. I thought everything was extremely beneficial and helpful in a lot of ways. A lot of good ideas. I enjoyed it.
Chairman, do you, before we make a motion to adjourn or get to that point, I was just wondering if any of our civics students had any questions about the ongoings of tonight that they would care to ask? Well, you got to come up here. I, I believe we'll edit...
You get to be televised.
Right.
How do you like that?
Especially if you're struggling for a grade, your teacher might give you that bonus point.
It's the back of your head, anyway.
Typically, you state your name.
My name is CJ Rush, and this is...
Charlie Donovan.
And we have no further questions at this time.
Well, I appreciate that.
Nice, way to take that, way to jump up on the spotlight.
Thank you, gentlemen. In a couple minutes, you can come up and hand us your papers.
It was nice of you to get them in.
I was really, I, I, they got my hopes up. I was really hoping they had a question about tonight that we could afford to discuss, but I appreciate them being here, and I more importantly appreciate the civics teacher for including this as part of his curriculum.
Absolutely, thank you. And I wanted to thank all of you for making last week's joint meeting. I think it was really good for us to be there and to hear you and Senator Duner. I was really happy that it could be deferred, you know, so we could have further legislation on that. So I thought that run really well. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn, man?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? The last time I get to say, Mr. Gasky?
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Sedillo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
And Kevin Robinson says aye. Good night.